All right, I've activated the recording. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Please be patient with me. All right, Madam Clerk, you can unmute yourself and please call the roll.
Thank you. Fishbait?
Here.
Laughlin?
Here.
Morone? No?
Not yet.
Okay. Morganstein?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Thank you. Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Not yet.
Testa, no. Sandri?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Boz?
Present.
Thank you. Amal Sa.
All right.
I'll just need to know when those.
I apologize, I'm a late arrival, Tester.
Okay, thank you, Benny. I'll need to know when Morone comes on.
All right. I'm going to start with an announcement. This is to explain how this will work in light of the constraints we have while working with the go-to-meeting system. In light of our present distant circumstances, this is going to be very different from prior public hearings on the budget. Because of the limitations of the virtual meeting platform, the department heads will not, are not compelled to be logged on to this meeting. Unfortunately, there will not be question and response that we have had in prior years. The public will have the opportunity to ask questions. Your questions will be recorded and they will be preserved for the department heads to answer during the upcoming special meetings that the council will have to meet with the departments individually through the budget process. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the public hearing unless you are the person asking a question. Also, please keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a traditional wooden gavel with me at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. So if people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so the person who has the floor can be solowed out and be heard. I will now proceed to go through the departments in alphabetical order. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular department budget, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look in one of the top corners of your screen, you will see a little cartoon text bubble. When you click on that icon, you will see a strip appear on the side of your screen. Please type into that strip your name and your request to speak. I will first look for questions from those who are using a computer or the smartphone application to participate. Once I've heard from all the logged in digitally, I will see comments from those who have dialed in. If you intend to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and address. As some of you or many of you might be aware, we had some inappropriate participation last night and I used that politely. The police are investigating that. We have some ability to trace the participate who contributed in that manner. And that is not going to be tolerated in any way, shape, or form. And I will warn the public that if you know who's doing this, they could be messing up this process for the appropriately participating members of the public. And I say that because if that's the case, if this type of interruption continues to occur, then these meetings will not feature public participation. They will only be able to be viewed by the public. That and I, based on last night, I have concerns about anonymous logins. So if you are logged in through the app and you are not identifying yourself, I may elect to dismiss you from participation. Thank you for your patience. And with that, I'm going to go in alphabetical order and I will start with questions for animal control or the dog pound. I see no indication in the chat bar. And I'm just going to ask if anybody who has dialed in by telephone, if you have questions for animal control or the dog pound. Okay. Next on the list is the Board of Assessment Appeals. Anybody who has questions regarding or comments regarding the Board of Assessment Appeals? I see no indication in the chat bar. Give that another 30 seconds, give or take. All right, and has anybody who has dialed in with a telephone have questions for the Board of Assessment Appeals? All right, next up is the Board of Education. If you've logged in with a computer, please type into the chat bar if you have questions for the Board of Education. Questions, comments regarding the Board of Education budget? Counselor Laughlin, as my co-ordinator, please tell me if I'm missing something. Thank you.
No, it doesn't look like you're missing anything.
Okay. Still on the Board of Education, is anybody who has dialed in with a telephone have questions for the Board of Education? Okay. No questions for the Board of Education. Board of Ethics. Any members of the public have questions for the Board of Ethics? Nothing in the chat bar. Anybody on the telephone have questions for the Board of Ethics?
Board of Ethics.
Sorry, did somebody say, was that a caller with a question for the Board of Ethics? Building Department. Anybody participating digitally have questions for the Building Department? No questions for digital participants for the Building Department. Anybody from the telephone have questions for the Building Department? No questions for the Building Department. Onto the School Cafeteria. Anyone have questions regarding the School Cafeteria budget? Nobody digitally participating with questions for the School Cafeteria budget? How about anybody who's called in on the telephone? All right, nothing from the telephone. Next is the Capital Appropriations Reserve in force, which for those of you following with the budget book, that is page number 89. Anybody in the digital world with questions for Capital Appropriations Reserve in force? Page 89 in your budget book. And going to the telephone. Anybody have questions regarding the Capital Appropriations Reserve in force? Page 89 in your budget book. All right. Capital and nonrecurring, which is page 23 in your budget book. Any questions regarding capital and nonrecurring? Page 23 in the budget book. Nothing from digital. This is capital nonrecurring, page 23 in your budget book. Anybody on the telephone have questions regarding capital nonrecurring? Page 23. The Capital and Nonrecurring Fund, which is page 83 in your budget book. Any questions regarding that? First, to digital participants. And then those on the telephone, questions on the Capital and Nonrecurring Fund, page 83 in your budget books. All right, nothing for the Capital and Nonrecurring Fund. Questions for the Conservation Commission? Any questions from computer, smartphone app participants on the Conservation Commission? Seeing nothing onto the telephone participants' questions regarding the Conservation Commission? All right, questions regarding the contingency account and other, which is on page 64 in your budget books? Contingency account and other, page 64. And on to the telephone participants' questions for the contingency account and other. Questions on debt service, which is page 22 in your budget book. Questions regarding debt service? No indicators. Those on the telephone, questions regarding debt service? Page 22 in your budget, in your budget book. Economic Development Commission is the next department, page 60 in your budget book. Any questions from the computer participants? No questions from the digital world. Questions from telephone participants regarding the Economic Development Commission? Questions for the Electric Division? Any questions for the Electric Division regarding their budget? It'll hide Kofar. I see your question, would you like to ask your question? I'm not sure that what you've typed in is going to be part of the recording.
I was wondering if and how the stay-at-home order.
Name and address, name and address.
I'm sorry, I had typed that before. Okay, Adelaide, Kofar, 35 Wiffle Tree Road in Wallingford. I was wondering if the stay-at-home order has in any way affected the usage of electricity and water sewer? And how it has affected that? And if the public utilities expect a longer-term change to the proposed budget based on COVID-19?
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the Electric Division from the computer participants? Those on the phone? Any on the phone who wish to comment or question the Electric Division budget? All right, on to emergency management and civil preparedness. Any questions regarding that budget? And emergency management, civil preparedness. Any questions from those on the telephone? Next budget line is employee insurance and other benefits. Questions regarding employee insurance and other benefits? Employee insurance and other benefits. Anybody on the telephone with questions regarding that budget line? Questions for the Engineering Department? Are there any questions for the Engineering Department regarding their budget line? Questions for the Engineering Department? And anybody on the telephone have questions for the Engineering Department? Questions for the Finance Department, page 20 in the budget book. Any questions for the Finance Department? Anyone on the telephone have questions for the Finance Department, page 20 in your budget book? Next budget line is the Fire Department and Emergency Management. Any questions for the Fire Department and Emergency Management?
Chairman, that's Fire Department and EMS, AKA ambulance.
Thank you for clarifying that does say EMS, ambulance. That clarification has not moved the needle, though. Anybody on the telephone have questions regarding the Fire Department and ambulance budget? Mr. Boz, for future reference, instead of saying including EMS, you could say include ambulance. It would save you from having to interrupt me in the future.
Will do.
Thank you. Questions regarding government access TV? Any GTV questions? Appearing to be none for the digital. And any telephone callers with questions for government television? All right, questions for the Health Department? That is page 41 in your budget book. Questions for the Health Department? No digital questions for the Health Department? Anybody on the telephone have questions for the Health Department? On from the Health Department to Human Resources and Risk Management, which is page 26 in your budget book. All right. Edelheid, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself and asking that question for the record.
Adelaide Kofar, 35 Wiffle Tree Road. I guess my question from before is the same for most departments. I tried to follow on the, in the book and I don't see many changes or any changes for the current health crisis. I was just wondering if that is in any way getting any consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And any questions from telephone callers regarding Human Resources Risk Management? Page 26 in your budget book. Onto inland wetlands. Questions regarding inland wetlands, which is page 58 in your budget book. Any questions from digital participants? Any questions from those on the telephone regarding inland wetlands, page 58 in the budget book? Saw what you did there, Tom. It's typically seven. All right. Next. For those following along in the book, page 29, Insurance, Property and Casualty. Any questions regarding that? Moving on to the analog. Any telephone callers with questions regarding insurance, property, and casualty? Page 29 in the budget book. Onto the law department, questions on the law department, page 18 in your budget book? Nothing from the digital world? And anybody on the telephone with questions regarding the law department budget, page 18 in your budget book? Appears not. Onto the library budget, page 24 in your budget book? No questions regarding the library from the digital world? And questions from those on the phone regarding the library budget, page 24? All right, moving on. The mayor's department budget is page 15 in your budget book, the mayor's department budget. Questions for those logged in digitally? All right, and those on the telephone, questions regarding the mayor's department budget, page 15? Okay. Next is parks and recreation. Questions regarding parks and recreation? All right, none logged in? And anybody on the telephone with questions for parks and recreation? None. Onto page 27 in the budget book, which is pension funds. Questions regarding pension funds, page 27 in your budget book? Pension funds, questions from the telephone? Onto planning and zoning, page 57 in your budget book, any questions regarding the planning and zoning budget? Any questions from the telephone regarding the planning and zoning budget?
Where'd you go exactly?
I'm just gonna try that one more time. All right, phone participants, questions regarding? All right, I don't think caller 10 has a question.
No, I keep trying to mute them, that's caller one. The bike ride.
Okay. All right. Next up? Next up is the police department, questions regarding the police department budget, that is page 30 in your budget book? I don't see any digital questions regarding the police department, and I'm just gonna give the telephone a shot. Any questions regarding the police department for those who have dialed in? Note takers? Probate court, page 63 in your budget book, questions regarding probate court? No questions for probate court, how about the telephone callers, any questions for probate court? All right, next up is program planning, which is page 16 in your budget book, any questions regarding program planning? And still on program planning, any telephone callers with questions regarding program planning?
Yes?
That doesn't seem to be about program planning. Next is the public utilities commission, that's just the commission on page 62. Public utilities commission, we'll try the telephone, any telephone callers with questions regarding the public utilities commission?
I don't know where it is.
Yep. Next up, the public works department, page 51 in your budget program book? No digital questions for public works? We'll try the phone one more time. Any questions from the telephone callers regarding the public works department? Next. Registrar of voters, any questions regarding the registrar's budget? Nothing in the digital world? Any telephone callers with questions regarding the registrar of voters' budget? Sewer division, page 79, any questions for the sewer division? All right. And any telephone callers with questions regarding the sewer division? I'm gonna take that as a none. Six year capital, six year capital is page 84 in your budget book, any any questions regarding six year capital? And any telephone callers with questions regarding the six year capital budget? That's page 84 in your budget book? I'm going to skip social services and come back to it. The town council budget is page 13 in your budget book, questions regarding the town council budget? And we'll go to the phones. Questions regarding the town council budget, page 13 in your budget book? Questions regarding the town clerk budget? Page 56 in your budget book? And anybody on the telephone have questions for the town clerk's budget? Any questions for the veterans center, which is page 45 in your budget book? Questions for the veterans center? Anybody in telephone land with questions for the veterans center? Questions for the water division? Any questions for the water division? None in the digital realm? Any telephone callers with questions from the water division? Questions for the youth and social services bureau, which is page 42 in your budget book? Any telephone callers with questions for the youth and social services bureau? Questions regarding the zoning board of appeals? Page 59? And any telephone callers with questions regarding the zoning board of appeals? All right. And these are the social services contributions budget lines. And I guess I'm gonna go line by line. So any questions regarding Wallingford Center Inc., this is all on page 44 in your budget book? And I'm just gonna go down the page in order. Questions for Wallingford Center Inc.? We have three telephone callers left, any questions for Wallingford Center Inc.? And how about for the Wallingford Center Inc. street scape improvements? Center Street Cemetery? Literacy volunteers? Emergency shelter Columbus House? Any telephone callers with questions for those budget lines? Public celebrations committee, whether digital or via telephone? Quinnipiac River Watershed Association? Digital or telephone? Wallingford Transit Authority subsidy? Wallingford Center Inc. facade improvement program? Digital or telephone? John J. Neardon RTC camp? Digital or telephone? Masters Manor? Digital or telephone? Wallingford Committee on Aging, digital or telephone? Wallingford Committee on Aging Bus Transportation? Digital or telephone? Ark Kuhn of Meriden-Wallingford, digital or telephone questions? Wallingford 2020 anniversary celebration, digital or telephone questions from callers? Historic program matching? Any questions, digital or telephone? Spanish Community of Wallingford, any questions, digital or telephone? All right, those are all the departments. I went through line by line, I called each department. We did have one questioner, and I think she's got a general question for all departments about the impact of the current COVID crisis on their budgets. And we did have email questions that we will ask during the special meeting for that particular department. There being no further business. This public hearing is concluded, thank you for those who logged in and participated and followed the rules, we are all grateful. And we'll see you again, have a good night, everyone.